I'd like to welcome everybody to the June 6, 2023 work session of Limestone County Commission. We have several public comments listed, so I'll just turn it over to Ellen this time.
Judge Charles Woodruff and Bobby Bailey.
Good morning, Judge. How are you?
Good morning.
Judge, morning Bobby. How are you?
Good morning. Hope everybody's doing well. We have before you guys from Elections Director Bobby Bailey and me as the Chief Election Officer of Limestone County as probate judge. We were informed that one of our polling locations, May's Memorial Baptist Church, no longer desired to be a polling location. Upon receiving that, since that's in District One, we coordinated discussions with Commissioner Sammet, and he was in full support of relocating that polling location. The ideal polling location would be Sardis Springs Baptist Church. However, Sardis Springs Baptist Church is not in the same beat as May's Memorial. So, under the Code of Alabama, only the county commission has the authority to move beat lines, which that's the information that's before you, to tweak the beat lines just a bit there in that area to change that Sardis Springs would be in the same beat as where May's Memorial, which, help me Bobby, going from beat-
I think it's beat two.
Going from three to beat two. No, I'm sorry. Go from two to three. It's in two, but it would put it to three. And it affects approximately eighty-four registered voters in the little pocket of area that Ms. Bailey researched and coordinated with the Board of Registars. The best thing is, it doesn't change ballots for any of those voters. They're still in the same county commission, state senate, state school board, state house, all the same, no changes of who they can vote for. It would just change where they go to vote, and the people that previously went to May's Memorial would now go to Sardis Springs. It's- Sardis Springs has already approved it, that they are welcoming us in their gym there. It's a much larger location. It's not in a very bad curve of Highway 251 as May's Memorial was. We actually, since we went to May's Memorial, have a temporary sign that's erected by the Engineering Department on Election Day that says "Voting Ahead, Please Slow Down", because it's in a very bad curve. So, I think it's a win-win. Commissioner Sammet was in full support of it. I think he even talked to some of the people at Sardis Springs. So, that's before y'all for approval, as y'all are the governing authority to move that beat line and establish the voting location.
Um, I have one, which I'm glad we're moving it because of safety location. That May's Memorial is a bad, bad location.
And that all, history, that all materialized when the Board of Education required us to get out of all the schools. We had to get out of Johnson, and that's when that kind of all came about.
And to top of that off too, you've got access without getting on 251 Highway at Sardis Springs.
You do.
You can come in from- you can come in from the Mooreville Road or the-
Or Mooreville Beatline, all that right in there.
Have a lot of different elects.
You do. And it's a big facility, lots of parking, ideal. When we initially were trying to move, had to get out of Johnson, we looked at Sardis Springs, but because of the beat line issues, we didn't make that change then, so I guess hindsight's 20/20.
One more question. I know that it's been a lot of conversation about the Lamb of God church and split. Have we got anywhere with that?
We have not. The hope was that the Catholic church on-
Seagulls.
Seagulls or Burgling would be ready. I don't think it's going to be ready for '24. Uh, we plan to go back to the city of Madison, both the mayor's office and the School Board of Education Superintendent's office. They have pretty much said, "We don't want you at James Clemmons." It'd be the ideal location if we can only have one, because it's plenty big and they have multiple gyms. As far as I know, they have not redrawn their city council lines. And currently, the city council lines are residents of Limestone County in the city of Madison are in two different city council districts. There was discussion that we would try to split two polling locations based on that city council line, but there was subsequent conversation that they may make everybody in Limestone County, city of Madison, its own city council district. So, I don't know where all that's fallen. We've got to do something, and we will be working hard with the city of Madison to try to figure that out, because Lamb of God cannot handle over, I think it's over eight thousand now.
I'm afraid they're going to back out.
And say, "We won't serve as a polling location." And that may be what pushes the envelope from Madison to say, because routinely, as with Athens, as with Ardmore, as with Elkmont, you guys approve whatever the municipality says. This is our polling location, so we're kind of at their- So, any conversation y'all can have with any leadership over there would be greatly appreciated.
That's your district, I think.
Yeah. Any help y'all can give with, I mean, because we have-
And we're even thinking James Clemmons as a temporary, because that church has committed to us once they get their sanctuary built.
That we could use their all-purpose building that they're currently having. And we looked at it last time, but they were going to have mass on Election Day. We only had about a four-foot hallway to put four thousand people through, and it just wasn't going to work.
And that was during the COVID time and all that too.
It was. And their entrance and exit, parking was not- Parking was decent in front, but the handicap was in the back, and it just had a lot of hurdles.
Well, alrighty, sounds good to me.
That's what we have today.
And thank y'all, and we'll-
Thank y'all.
Get this done for y'all.
We appreciate y'all.
Appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
Ellen, next.
Phyllis Condon.
Alright. Phyllis, if you don't mind, step up to the microphone, please.
Sure. I'm back.
Good to see you.
Hi there. Hi. My name is Phyllis Condon. I live in Athens, and most of you are familiar with who I am, and that I'm an advocate for animals and the people who work with, who help them. Since I spoke to you last, I started a nonprofit called Limestone Animal Alliance, and we meet regularly to think of ways we can help with a growing concern for another animal shelter, overpopulation of animals, need for education about animals, and lack of empathy for these animals. We would love to be financially able to build an animal shelter, but it is not feasible for us at this point. Also, we feel that it really should be the responsibility of the city and county to provide this much-needed facility. The existing shelter has had and continues to have its problems, and it's not adequate place for people to work or to house animals. There is now mold growing in the newer part of the shelter. Tom, if you don't mind, he's going to pass out some papers for you. It's a picture of the mold and then the statistics on the animal shelter. The AC still does not work in the older section, and all they have is a small portable unit for the whole section, and that's in the back, and that's the oldest section, which does not really work either. That is only a small portion of things that are not conducive to an adequate shelter for people or animals. Who would be responsible if a person that is working or volunteering at the shelter were to pass out or even die from heat exhaustion, or get sick from the existing conditions? And as far as we know, everybody, there are no provisions set in place to our knowledge if something happens to Dr. Pittman either. According to Alabama.com, that's April 2 of this year, Alabama grew faster than much of the nation in 2022. New estimates from the U.S. Census Bureau shows Limestone County has been Alabama's fastest-growing county for three of the last four years, including 2022. The county added more than 3,500 people. That's a growth of 3.3% in just a year. With growth also brings revenue, which we should have plenty of now, to build another shelter. I have also brought statistics, as you see, that's the other paper, from the animal shelter of turn-ins, adopted, rescued, and euthanized dogs and cats for the last year, as well as this year. And that's on the very bottom. I had to handwrite that in. As you can perceive, as you can see, Priscilla, Director of this shelter, and her staff do an extraordinary job of trying to adopt the animals and send the others to rescues. However, it is a daunting task, and the mindset of how we treat animals and the feelings on spay and neuter has to change. I know that all of you want the best for Athens and work very hard at achieving that goal. A new shelter would go a long way in improving Athens as well. I believe if we could tell the public that a new shelter is in the works, that you could see a lot more support in your efforts, both in your role as leaders of this city and possibly monetarily for the new shelter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Phyllis.
Thank you.
Ellen, next, Ellen.
Garth Leveron.
Hello, Garth. How you doing?
I'm doing well. How are y'all?
Doing great.
Permission to approach Mr. Pate?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Bring it up. Nice to see everyone.
Yes, sir. How you doing?
Good to see you, Garth.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Garth Leveron Jr., as we've already discussed that. It's nice to see y'all. I am the President with the Athens Arts League. This is a position that I've held for the last eighteen months, and I want to thank you for all that you do. The county commission, the city of Athens, all city-county officials, I appreciate it. The growth that we've got going on in this county is tremendous, as indicated by the statistical information that we just heard from the previous speaker. What I want to let you know is about the Athens Arts League and the work that we've been doing. The Athens Arts League has been around since 2006, and throughout this time, we have added quite a bit of, I think we've added quite a bit of value to the downtown area. We've hosted numerous art festivals. We've had musical events. We've had some successful Mardi Gras parades, and I feel that we do a lot to attract people down into the downtown area that come and shop in our local businesses and so forth. The next move that we're making is what's known as the Scout House, and that's the information, and I've emailed y'all information here in the last few days, just to let you know about what we're doing and everything. But just to consolidate everything, we are looking to expand more into musical education. And the Scout House building, which is the former Athens City Board of Education down here on 313 East Washington Street, this building will be used partially as a performance venue. It's a very small place. It only seats about fifty people, according to the fire codes. And this will be a venue that, I call it a companion venue to the, to what we've been having Friday nights and things like that, where we have large crowds down on the square. This will be more of a broken-down element of that. It'll be a place where we can get singer, hire singer-songwriter people, people like Roger Murrow and, excuse me, Roger Murra, and people like that to come, you know, perform small concerts, and then go into detail about the songs that they've written, what inspired them, things of that nature. Not only would it be something like that, but we need a place locally where kids can come and get music lessons. I know the lady that teaches my daughter's piano is having to move out of her current location, and she needs somewhere to go. And it's not just piano. It could be violin or guitar or anything, and we want to provide a space for that. We received a grant from the Steelcase Foundation for about $30,000, and with this money, we used it to purchase musical equipment. A lot of it is live sound equipment, like a PA system, but we also have a tremendous amount of state-of-the-art recording equipment. So, we also, and we're in the process of getting this set up now inside the building. The equipment, what we want to do with it is provide opportunities for young people, high school or early college age, to come and work with these items. And, you know, if this is a career direction that they're looking to go into, being that we're in close proximity to Nashville and Atlanta, we believe that this is a way that they can get started in that direction. So, we are basically in the victory lap at this point. The building, we've put nearly $300,000 into it on the outside and the inside. This thing was stripped down to the bare studs, and now the floors have been refinished, walls painted. It looks great in there. What we're waiting on now, we've got to get a couple of cabinets put in, and then finish out on the plumbing, and then we've got to get a fire alarm system put in. I've included some costs on what that will be. So, at this time, I'm approaching the county commission about possibly making a contribution toward the Athens Arts League to help us with this, and I am asking for $5,000 to go toward this, and would just like you all to consider that, and I appreciate your time. If y'all have any questions, I'll be around after the meeting, so you can talk to me then, or I've sent you all my phone number, I think.
Thank you, Garth.
Thank you, Garth.
Ms. Clark, how are you doing today?
I'm doing well, thank you. Not sure. I'm Sherry Clark from Liberty Way in, Darrell Sammet is our representative, not here today. Of two subjects I would like to address, one is the Liberty Lane, which is this very small road with a bridge coming across to Liberty Lane, where we live. And the bridge that we have talked with repeatedly, we're trying very hard to get a new bridge. Apparently, it was authorized a number of years ago. We're relatively new to the area, so we're still learning, and if I say something wrong, please forgive me. But I'm understanding that we don't have the money anymore for a new bridge. Right now, it's my understanding it's being checked every month for safety, but we don't see any signs of any kind of maintenance on the bridge. And that's one of the things that we would like very much to have considered, is to see some maintenance on the bridge if we can't replace it. It's not just the folks who live on our short Liberty Lane that we're concerned about. We have quite a few people that come across that bridge. We have Hatch Cemetery, and a lot of people come over for maintenance and visit in the cemetery, and other people that just come by across the bridge with access to the creek and fishing, and it's not just the five of us who live there right now and the two who are getting ready to build. So, I'm a little bit frustrated with this presentation, this time that we have to come. We have come several times, and it seems like you say things that you're concerned about, and then it kind of gets lost in space. We don't get any kind of feedback or what's, if anything's being done about it. So, maybe I don't understand the actual process. Is this just to make you aware of things that we're concerned about? And how does it get handled after we express a concern? That's number one. Okay, the bridge. My second concern is, again, we're new to the area. I recently joined the Wellness Center in Athens, and two weeks after I joined, I was going to the regular swim aerobics, and then it was closed down for humidity problems. I did come and express a concern about that, about, well, it was the week after it was closed down, and we've heard nothing more since then about the status of the Wellness Center, specifically the pool. So, I'm looking for help in that regard. I feel like I'm speaking for an awful lot of people that were regulars. We had at least thirty-five to forty people every class that I attended. And apparently, there were a bunch of them going to come yesterday and didn't know that the meeting was today. So, here I am again. Please let us know what can we do about, what can you do about that? We feel like we can't do anything. Apparently, that's, you had an agreement and it wasn't honored? Is that correct? What's, what's the deal?
The agreement we had last year was honored for that year. And we've been talking with the hospital, but it's the hospital's decision on the Wellness Center.
A hospital?
The hospital runs and operates the Wellness Center, yes ma'am.
And so, it's just closed, and we don't have any say about it? The pool's going away, period?
Yeah, but that is the hospital's decision, and we have been in conversation with them, but it is the hospital's decision.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Alright. Thank you, ma'am.
Rick Bay.
Rick, how you doing today?
Good. How's everyone?
Oh, we're doing great, Rick.
So, I'm here to speak about the same two issues. I have property on Liberty Way, trying to build two houses, and because of the bridge, can't bring heavy materials, and it's causing a major issue. It's caused me months and dollars because of it. I know, you know, we've tried to get the grants, but with the grants not coming through, what's the next step? Can we budget it? I know the budget is tight, just like everywhere else, but something needs to be done at some point. We can't just keep kicking the can down the road. So, whatever y'all can brainstorm and come up with, you know, with Mr. Massey, it would be greatly appreciated. Also, as she said, we were at the property a couple days ago, and there was a dozen cars there for the cemetery, and there's cars and people coming up daily, just walking through there, driving through there, looking around. So, it's not just the five houses or whatever. Secondly, my wife was at the Wellness Center the other day, and they were actually draining the pool. I don't understand what that is, and there's talk that they're going to fill it in. Is that really what was part of their agreement? We have numerous relatives that are handicapped that relied on that pool for wellness, health, and there's no place else for them to go at this point. So, they're just ceasing to use the facility, and their health is declining. And that's a number of people, as she had said. Lots of people had relied on that. So, if there's anything that we can do to twist the arm of Huntsville Hospital, et cetera, we'd like to help you. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Steven Clark.
Mr. Clark, if you don't mind, step to the police.
Good morning, gentlemen. Steve Clark, over on Liberty Lane, or Liberty Way, serviced by Liberty Lane, the bridge across the Little Limestone Creek. The problem I'm seeing with this is lack of maintenance on that bridge. In particularly, let me back up a second. Two months ago, the crew came out there and they addressed the aggregate on Liberty Way. They did a fantastic job. Thank you. Okay? Now, at the bridge, the problem I'm seeing is the approach and the departure to the bridge. There is none, okay? And what's happening is, the stone and previous asphalt deteriorates to the point that it approaches the bridge itself, and that is a ninety-degree sharp corner. And it's knocking out the alignment of vehicles and damaging tires, stuff like that. As the property owner, for half of that, I got out there and I filled it with aggregate stone. Can we please add an approach and departure as far as a road maintenance item, whether it be concrete or flexible pavement of asphalt, to rebuild that surface? Until we get our new bridge, this is a maintenance interim, okay? Otherwise, I'm going to have to start submitting an invoice for road repair. And as an American Disabled Veteran, I don't think I should have to be out there repairing a public road. I need your help. The community, a public service, needs this support. So, please, let's do something with it. It's small in nature, but it means so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Everybody comment?
Thank you, everybody. And like I've said several times, if you cannot make it to a meeting or something, you're more than welcome to email in a request, or we always put it in with a minute. I know a lot of times people can't make it to the meeting, so if you'll email in a public comment or anything, you're more than welcome to do that, so. Alrighty, moving forward, and thank everybody for the public comments. First on the agenda, we'll have an approval of the minutes from May the 15th of 2023. Anybody got any discussion with the minutes? Next thing on here will be the claims and the amount of $2,659,027.21. Anybody got any discussion with any claim prevented in front of the commission today? Alright, public hearings, we'll have none. Resolution orders, we have none. Contracts, agreements, MOUs and grants. We have one grant on here that we're applying for to approve a 20% contribution in the amount of $35,686. This is for the purchase of two vans for the council and agent through an ALDOT grant, and awarding, if awarded, ALDOT will receive 80%, where they will pay $142,742. And we have done this several times over the years with the COA for this, and I want to thank Drew and Krista. They work on all these grants, and that's a big plus to us getting some new vans. I know we've had some handicap van issues, and we've been limited on what we can do because we've had some vans down, so this is really beneficial to the council and agency. Anybody got any discussion with that? Alright, we have one budget revision on here today, which is several parts to it. It's in District Four. It'll be a grand total of $16,150. Be just transferring some money around, getting close to the end of the year to finish up with everything. Anybody got any discussion with that? Have you got anything, Ladok?
No.
Alright, no discussion with that. We'll move on. Emergency purchase, we have none. Board appointments, and this is for conversation. Nomination, appointment for the Athens, for the Healthcare Authority Board of Directors. The way this is set up is, this is for the hospital, and it's, they, we went back and forth several months with the hospital, and they kept saying that we need to submit them three names. Well, it was right the opposite. The hospital was supposed to submit us three names. And as a chairman, I mean, as a commission, we have the right to vet these people, interview them, or whatever. This is totally up to y'all. We could pick one of these names today and put on there. We can go through these three names, and y'all can vet them, talk to them, or if y'all want to come up with a different name or whatever. I know we've had this conversation several times, and we can put it on the next commission meeting for an appointment. And the nominee that they sent us, the three names for the Healthcare Board was, this would be for Mr. James Moffett, Kyle Bridgeforth, and Joseph Cannon was the three names that they submitted to us. I'm going to let y'all decide what we do. I mean, do y'all want to?
I would suggest that we, I would like to nominate Joseph Cannon, put it on the next, on the agenda and vote on it either today or next, next commission meeting.
Okay.
Cannon would be my choice.
Okay. I mean, we're not supposed to really deliberate here on this, but I mean, we can with discussion. I mean, it's a, and, but if y'all want to, do y'all want to read over the names? And y'all want to go through it and see who y'all want to nominate? And y'all, everybody get back together, and we'll put it on the next meeting? Is that, I think that's the-
I think that's the best way.
I think that's the best way, I would say, to handle it, because, you know, it gives you time to vet them. And so, you would suggest Joseph, and I'll give you, and I know, out of respect, Darrell's not here today, and he may, he'll probably be back next meeting, and they'll give Darrell a chance to look at it, and if y'all want to look at nominating another name or put another name in the hat, so. So, that's where we're going to leave that, Drew, and they'll get with you within between now and the next meeting, and go from there. Alrighty. So, that will be for next meeting, and to put a name on there for next meeting, and like I said, let the record be saying that Joseph is his choice, and y'all pick up who y'all want, or go with Darrell from there. Alright, moving on, award of bids. We have two bids to award here today, and one of them will be from Printers and Stationery, I mean, for envelopes, and this is Carrier Systems, and it's $898. And then the other one is for a Goose neck trailer, and this is for a replacement one down in District Three that had, I think it had axle pin or damage or something. And they've been going through this process a while, and this is $15,500 from Long Wolf Trailer. So, anybody got any discussion with either of them? Alrighty, moving on, we have personnel action, and what I was going to do is, and this is fine with y'all, the first five are all corrections officers. We can take all of them up in one motion if y'all don't have an issue with that, and that's safe from having to go through it. And the next two will be for temporary labor and engineering. We'll take both of them up, which I mean, may have a conflict, so I'll talk about that in a minute. And then we, but we'll go through, the fathers read through the first five here, we'll go from there, and then we'll talk about them. The first five would be to approve to hire Brianna Litzcom and Montana McClendon, and those both right there are corrections officers, and this will both be effective the sixth day, and this will be all pending drug screenings. And the next one will be to approve to hire Amy Hammond, Hamby, Connor Hinton, and Braxton Bowen. And this right here, these all three right here will be paid for through a grant that we have through the ADPH Grant System. This is where they pay for, I think it's three years or so many years, and is it five? What, it's some kind of, they pay part of the salary for a length of time. I have to remember exactly, but they, that's where we turned it on that grant, where we'd hire so many, and they reimburse us for that, so. But if y'all don't have an issue with that, I mean, they're all hired today, and three of us paid for through the grant, and two of them just regular hires, but that will, if y'all don't have an issue with it, just take all five of those up in one motion. Or if y'all ain't got an issue with either one, anybody got an issue with anybody on there?
Nope.
Alright, and I know we've been short some corrections officers, and I know the sheriff and them needs the corrections officer, so that would be, that would be, that way that works out. We'll hire all five of these, with three of them being paid through the- works out, we'll hire all five of these with three of them being paid through the grant. All right, then the next two on here, and I think that Commissioner Townsend may have a conflict interest with one of them. I will, we'll bring that up in the commission meeting, and so he will be excusing himself from voting on one of the two, so, but we'll take those up in two different motions, and we can explain that when we get to the commission meeting. But the six and seven will be to hire two temporary labors, and this is just, we hire these every summer to help out in District, they help out in the engineering department, the paving department. And I think it's a conflict because he's kin to one of them. And I mean, we always ask him if he want to be excused. I know y'all are sort of very disgusted, that's what it's about. He's kin to one of the two, so.
Yeah.
Anyways, we hire two high school kids that graduate, and they come in and usually before they go to college, and sometimes they'll stay and work with us all the time, sometimes they go on further, so. Anyways, this is just temporary labors and engineering department just for road traffic control and helping out and just things like that, so. We'll take those two up, and I think we'll take those up in two different motions because of a conflict. And then the number five, eight, will be to approve to promote Hayden Russell to Equipment Operator Two in the Engineering Department. This is, Hayden was hired a year or so ago, and he's completed everything he needed, so that would just to move him up. And he's got his CDLs, whatnot he had to get. And the other one will be Logan McMahon. We hired him a few years ago, and he's been a two, and it's an opening and a three. We had one that left us, and he's moving up to a three. So both of those will be in Engineering Department Promotions, and you know, that's one good thing about it, they'll start lower and they'll work their way up, and that gives them an opportunity to, to, you know, give some incentive to get CDLs and things like that, so. We'll thank both of them for doing whatever. And number 10 will be, anybody got any discussion with either one of those two? Get ahead of myself. Number 10 will be to approve, to amend the staffing plan under the Animal Control to reflect the following. And what we're doing here is, we had one of the Animal Control Officers retired at the end of the month, and the sheriff, he came in and requested that, you know, they're going, they're going to move a deputy over to the other position or hire a deputy in that position, somebody who APO certified, to where they can serve papers and make reports and things like that when they're there, is my understanding and that stuff. So that will be to move, to change the staffing plan, to amend the staffing plan, to have, as listed, animal, sheriff's corporal, and that's the guy that's over it, that's Gil, and then we'll have the sheriff's deputy, it'll be APO certified, it'll be a grade 16 position, then we'll have one Animal Control Officer, which is Mr. Clem. So and we will thank Joe Moss for all his years of service. I know he spent 30 something years with the county, I think, so he retired and went home, then hope, happy retirement for Joe, so.
All the, all three of these officers still in the Animal Control?
They are. They're in Animal Control budget, yes. And that will come out of the, the Public Health Tax.
So all we're doing is increasing the grade?
Yes. It's the same, yeah, same number of people. It is no more, not a new position, it's just swapping from, if you'll read right there, the staffing plan used to be listed as two Animal Control Officers, that was the grade, and we're just increasing the grade, which, you know, it'll actually be a less pay because Joe was way topped out, and then the next guy coming in won't be, you know, so that would be, so that is just a swapping of the grade, basically. And then that officer will be APO certified, to where he can serve papers and have arresting powers if he needed to, I reckon. So anything else? Anybody got any issue with that?
Nope.
All right. Moving on, merit increases. We don't have any merit increases today. That's unusual. As many employees we got, nearly 300, that's unusual, if somebody wasn't hired this week of the great time, so. Anyhow, so we have no merit increases today. At the Engineers Report, I'm going to turn it over to Mark, and he'll explain, one of these will be struck off today, so go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have just one subdivision for your consideration, O'Neil School Subdivision. This is a minor for preliminary and final, creating three lots in District Four. The Autumn Woods is listed on there. We're removing it from the, we're removing it from the agenda. They have a few things that they still have to get taken care of before we can consider it. So we're just removing it from the agenda.
Okay.
And then just kind of as an update, we are, we've kind of gone back and we're putting shoulders on some roads that had, that we had kind of moved off of because we needed the shoulder machine, so we've completed Huntsville Brown's Ferry. And this week, by the end of this week, we should be caught up with our shoulders and be in a position first of next week to start moving back on to our paving program. I think that Rogers Group is out on Menifee, and they're paving currently, right, currently. They moved in last week, and so, end of the week, they ought to be wrapping that up as well, so. So we're making good progress on our paving program. And like I said, we're still right about where we want to be so far. We're not behind what we had scheduled, so even with the hiccup of having to kind of move back and take care of shoulders. But we'll be moving to the next, the next, next project on the list, which I think is in District Four.
It's the Easterberry Road.
On Easterberry, so we'll be moving to it, probably moving equipment Monday, Tuesday next week is what we'll be looking at, starting to move equipment out there.
Okay.
And that's, that's all we have going on.
Thank you, Mark. Commissioner Townsend, you the one that got a subdivision?
I know, it's surprising.
Danny, you lost out on yours.
I did. Great.
All right, anyways, moving on, we have, any, any discussion with anything with Mark before we move on? Other bids, we have to approve the following items to be sold on GovDales. The first one will be from Council and Agent, which will be a Ford Tourist, VIN number listed there below, and then District Three have a 2017 Chevrolet Silverado and a dump trailer. So anybody got any discussion with any one of those items? And then number two on here would be to improve all the insolvations, errors, and taxes and litigations for the 2022 as presented by the Revenue Commission Office. We do this every year, and it's a thing in your package to explain it. It's just where the tax solvations needed. Anybody got any discussion with that? And then number three will be to approve the changing of the polling place and the beat line. This will be changed from Maze Memorial Baptist Church to Star of Springs, as presented by Ms. Bailey and Mr. Wood, Judge Wood. Anybody got any discussion with that? And I think that is a, an ideal move and an ideal situation, because I know Maze Memorial, there's been several bad accidents in that curve. I know we even lost a firefighter or two in that curve, I think, over the years, so I mean, it's a, so I mean, it's a, it's a bad, bad curve right there, and it's a bad place coming out. So that'll be a big plus in the safety of, I know we moved Elmont from Elmont Town Hall to the Fire Hall a few years ago to get, where people can get in and out easier there, so. Thank you for them for coming in. Anybody got any discussion with that? And then, then number four on here will be to, I guess I'll need to turn page here, but it's a change from beat two to beat three, as I explained, so everybody knows that. Number four will be to approve an electronics meeting policy, and ACCA has reached out to us with this, and this is, this is something that was approved, new legislation that never could be done before, to where if somebody has a serious illness or something like that, they can participate if health knocks them out, where they could participate meeting electronically if we accept this. And, you know, I know we have one out today, but he couldn't participate today anyways because it has to be in effect 45 days, I think. Isn't that right, Drew?
That's right.
And it's got to be 45 days, so this is just in case of the future, and it'll be a month and a half before it's ever in the policy anyways, but if, I hope and pray nobody has any sicknesses and all, but if they do, this is where they can participate electronically. And with that being, anybody got any discussion with that? And I think that's a good thing, and I thank the legislators for passing that, because, you know, a lot of times people, you know, especially somebody taking treatments or something don't want to be around the public, and, you know, we want to try and to protect everybody as much as we can, so.